Mark time, march. Color guard, hold. Freeze it. Polish. Ready, begin.
I declare the release of the 5th of July of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, when my nation, when they die, in their visible, the liberty of justice is our law.
Okay, I read. Polish. Forward, march.
Good evening and welcome to the North Torrance Homeowners Association General Meeting. My name is Mary Ann Hamad and I am the President. It's great seeing you all and thank you for coming. Looks like it's a very exciting candidate forums this evening. I would like to recognize and present the current elect officials. Mike Griffiths. I'd like to introduce the North Torrance Homeowners Board. Terry Fury, First Vice President. Brandon Mattson, who's not here this evening. Rita Anderson, Secretary. Glenn Terry Treasure. Zora Muhammad, Director-at-Large. Frances Romero, Director-at-Large. And Dr. Anil Mohammed, Director-at-Large. So just a few housekeeping items. So it's important that you provide us your contact information. We have moved to a new email platform and so it might go to your spam. So please make sure, check with the front desk that we have your email address, your phone number, because we like to make phone calls as well. The treasure report is at the front if you need to look at that. And then for tonight's meeting, for our very first time, we have a sponsor for our meeting and it is Alan Glensbad. Stand up. Thank you very much for your support and if there's any flyers in the back, you can reach out to some of those in the very front. But thank you Alan for your support this evening, we really appreciate that.
Three flyers over there.
Okay, so tonight obviously we're having the candidate forum for mayor, for council and for mayor. So first we're going to be having the council and then we're going to transition to the mayor. So we actually will have a break between the council and the mayor forums, it'll be about 10-minute turnaround. As a moderator, my job is to keep the event running smoothly. I'm not a censor and I do not decide what is true or not true. Okay? So we would appreciate it if you would hold your applause until the end. Okay? All right, well let's get started. Rita and Anil are our questionnaires.
Mary Ann, before we start, who's holding up the stop signs?
What I'm going to do is you're going to have a minute for each question. It'll count down. When you get 15 seconds left, the screen will go yellow. When you have five seconds left, it'll go red. After that, the spring's in your chair and...
It'll be me sitting next to him telling you to stop.
Okay, well thank you very much. We will begin with our city council candidate forum first. With that, we'll start with our opening remarks and with that we'll have our first person deliver the opening remarks, which is Mr. Jimmy Gao.
Thank you and thank you North Torrance Homeowners Association for hosting us tonight. I'm Jimmy Gao, I was born in Torrance. My first job was as a lifeguard at Vanderpoel Swim School, the business my grandmother built and ran in Torrance for 20 years. She was part of the PTA group that created the Torrance Unified School District and that's why I believe in upholding education as a priority and fostering civic engagement with our students. My grandfather helped start the YMCA in Little Leagues. He always said, "If you can't find it in Torrance, you don't need it." And I grew up believing that. Memories of my uncle Sergeant Tom Vanderpoel and Captain Mike Tracy, killed in the line of duty in Torrance in 1994, are reminders to me of the importance of our first responders. To me, they're truly heroes. I'm running for city council because of the value of public service they inspire in me. It is an honor to serve our city by wearing what I call a lot of hats. Foremost for me is as the Chair of the Torrance Social Services Commission. Now I'm ready to take the next big step in moving Torrance forward by serving as your next city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. Next one, Mr. Chen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Chen and I'm running for a seat on the Torrance City Council. My wife Amy and I moved into Torrance 26 years ago for two key reasons. Strong school system and a very safe and secure neighborhood. I was actually raised in the South Bay for over 50 years. I am a first-generation immigrant from Taiwan. I graduated from Carson High School a little east of here, went on to UCLA and received a degree in electrical engineering. I have 33 years of 21st century industry experience in both system engineering and program management of high-value programs such as the F-18 Super Hornets radar. I was responsible for developing the vision for future naval aviation, how are the warfighters going to fight many years down the road? As your councilman, I will leverage the same kind of experience, discipline, to run the city council. As for your vote, June 5th, for city council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Mr. Matucci.
Hi, my name is Arulio Matucci and my family originally moved to Torrance back in 1977. I attended Seaside Elementary School, the same school my son Giuseppe attends today as a first grader. My wife's from Argentina, she's all the way in the back. Do consider her to be one of my number-one supporter and hopefully not my only supporter. We bought our home in the Seaside area back in 2011, just about three blocks away from where I grew up on Milley Drive. I'm a Torrance small-business owner. I currently serve on the Torrance Social Services Commission as a vice-chair. I also serve on the board as a vice-president of the New Challenge Ministry, is one of the largest food banks here in the area. And I'm a past board member of the Torrance Rose Flow Association. I'm also the founder of the Unified Small Business Alliance, which is a free membership organization with over 2,600 small businesses that come together to network and such. And anyways, I look forward to answering any questions tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan.
This is the second time I've sat up here in North Torrance. I'm very impressed, both times you had the color guard come forward and we stood up for the pledge of allegiance. I believe that's what's called patriotism and thank you for your showing of it. I hope you remember that I served as your councilman for eight years using the banner "Leadership with Integrity." I have and always will live up to that banner. I was first elected to the city council in June 2006 as a reform candidate and to this day, I'm still recognized for openness, integrity, and honesty. I believe that character, tenacity, hard work, self-reliance, and personal responsibility are essential ingredients for all members of the Torrance City Council. My motivation to once again seek public office is my discomfort with the current state of affairs with our political leadership. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Councilman, Waithe.
I'm proud to call Torrance my hometown. Having been raised here, been married my wife Sue, grown up our four children, there's no place I would rather live. For all our community has provided my family after retirement, I chose to devote my time and energy to improving our city's quality of life. Almost five years as your city councilman, seven years on the Torrance Planning Commission, I'm the current Chair of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments and I'm the Vice-Chair of the West Vector Control District. I've been President of the Torrance Historical Society, President of the Torrance Cultural Arts Foundation, Vice-President of the Torrance Public Library Foundation. I believe that my long list of civic and local nonprofit experience is testimony to accomplishing my original objective. Serving on the Torrance City Council has been the culmination of my public service. I'm honored to serve you and play a vital role in setting policy that positively impacts every member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodrich.
Good evening and thank you to the North Torrance HOA. I'm proud to be a member of the council that has taken on the tough challenges during the last four years. I'm also proud to have supported public safety, including giving our public safety officers the resources they need to keep our status as the 10th safest mid-sized city in America. I supported elimination of modified hydrofluoric acid from the refinery and I'm proud to have restored the Community Emergency Response Team. We've done much work on infrastructure, repairing miles of roads and sidewalks, and I'm going to continue in the next four years to keep pushing until we can be proud of our roads again. Finally, the next four years is about our future and that's why I'm running. I want to push to fill the vacant former Toyota campus with technology companies to set us up well for the future in terms of tax revenue prosperity so that we can continue to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we will begin with question number one. "We have one class, we have a Class 1 fire department. However, costs are rising with respect to benefits and pensions, which may also cause a contraction in organization. Do you feel our safety force is staffed adequately? If not, how would you ensure that Torrance maintains and retains an adequate safety force while meeting its fiscal obligations?" And we will start with Mr. Chen.
I believe the current fire department is adequately staffed. There's a fire that happened in July March, I believe, yesterday. And they were there right there and got that taken care of. So when you see an issue and they're taking care of it, that means you've got sufficient staff to take care of it. Now with respect to your question about really as funding and all the benefits, the key issue here we're really talking about is, does a city have enough revenue to provide all the benefits for the fire department, for the police department? So I believe what we need to do is generate new ideas to bring in new businesses in the city of Torrance. Because all these, the question that really comes down to is, do we have enough money to pay for more staff if we need them? But at this point, if all the fires are taken care of, they're adequately staffed. If the fire chief believes we need something more, then he should come up with a recommendation and justify why he needs more staff. That's how I see that.
Next, Mr. Sullivan.
First of all, Class 1 does not mean just a fireman. It's the water pressure, the amount of fire hydrants, the amount of equipment, and the amount of trucks. That's what the council provides. We have 49 firefighters on duty at all times. And actually, we are such a large fire department, when Hermosa needs a fire truck, they come get us and our employees. When Redondo needs another fire truck, they come get us and our employees. We've actually changed more from fighting fires to be emergency response. When I was in council, we made for every fire engine had a paramedic on it, plus the paramedic vehicles. Eighty percent of the calls are for EMS, car accidents, heart attacks, accidents where you break a leg at work, all these types of things. And our fire department is well-prepared for that. They take care of all sorts of instances and they take care of max within five minutes, many of them within two. No other city could you get a response for that. The big thing is wages. You know, if you want the best, you can't pay the worst. If you want the best, you can't pay the fourth worst. You've got to pay the best. And our firefighters and our police department... Time up.
Do you want to finish that thought?
No. Time's up.
Bring up one thing. When asked a question, you wait for the time to start because this finger's not working.
Yeah, what that was?
Councilman... Councilman Goodrich.
I'm waiting. As councilmember, you know one thing about me, I can follow instructions.
I have to hire two people.
Okay. In regards to our fire department, I am a little bit concerned about the staffing there because, like we already mentioned, eighty percent of the calls these days are for health issues, falls by seniors and whatnot. And as our baby boomers continue to age, those calls are only going to increase, so we have to make sure to keep on top of staffing for there. Our police department, we've made strides. It is concerning because originally we were at 22 vacancies, but we enacted a program to recruit some lateral officers. We're now down to eight vacancies. Want to get that to zero vacancies to make sure that we're fully staffed. And in terms of paying for it, we continue to monitor the budget. One thing that we have done that was very fiscally prudent was prepay almost $10 million of pension debt when we came into one-time monies over the last four years. So we're very fiscally prudent with our money and that's going to pay dividends going into the future and free up other resources for other areas of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Gao.
Yes, I am a firm believer in adequately staffing our first responders, not only staffing, but training and equipping those first responders. Just a little side note, just because it's on the top of my head. There is a mental health first aid course that's happening at the library. There's still time for the second piece of that, that's happening in the next two Mondays, on the 16th and the following Monday. So check with Hillary, the librarian, to get involved in that. Very interesting, I took that as part of the thing offered to commissioners and librarians and people. But as far as paying, I think that the council has done a good job of making payments to the pension, so I would encourage going forward with that plan as well. Thank you.
Mr. Matucci.
Oh, thank you. I think, I guess the question would probably be best suited for the people that are on the front lines, the ones that are actually working the streets per se. The fire chief, as far as I know, seems like we're pretty well-staffed for the fire department. Of course, I'll always be open to any kind of conversation as for what's needed more than what's wanted. Although, you know, we do have to be financially prudent, you know, we can't just, you know, just give, 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 because, you know, even though public safety is a top concern, we also have to be responsible towards the taxpayers. And as far as public safety in general, I think we're doing a pretty good job. I know there's some shortfalls in hiring, which I find it amazing because I think we're offering pretty good paychecks to these individuals. It should attract some pretty good talent, so thank you.
Councilman Waithe.
Thank you very much. Torrance is ranked by the FBI as one of the top 10 safest cities for the United States of America. Our fire department is rated ISO Class 1. It's one of few fire departments across the entire nation that have that rating. The residents of our community insist on the best. That's the best in personnel, that's the best in training, that's the best in equipment. Torrance runs a balanced budget and we pay for the best because our residents insist on it.
Thank you very much. Okay, here's our next question. "In 2018, there have been 17 school shootings where someone was hurt or killed. On March 27th, the Torrance Unified School District and the Torrance Police Department published a joint press release whereby they noted that the city funds four school resource officers. Given that we have 34 campuses from elementary to adult schools, do you believe four SROs is sufficient coverage for our educational community? To what extent does the city carry its responsibility in protecting our students and community? How will you work with the school board to provide greater safety for students?" This is a yellow card question and we're going to start with Mr. Matucci.
Waiting for that finger. Not from you guys, sorry.
You said that just in time.
Well, I think we need to, first of all, make it a top priority, public safety, especially the safety of our children. If we can't find the money to do it, then we're doing something wrong. That's all I have to say. And because there's a lot of projects that we don't necessarily need, but we just keep on throwing them on the books. And if it's a, if it's a difference between having a, for instance, a splash pad at Wilson Park and having armed security or some kind of security at our schools, what do you think I'm going to pick? I'm going to go for the security first. If I have to pick between a fireworks show and public safety, I would put public safety first. So we need to make it a top priority and I don't know exactly what the plan might be and definitely going to be open to discussion, but anyways, that's my position, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goodrich.
Well, security is a top priority in the city and that's why we're the 10th safest mid-sized city in America. There's a lot more than just those school resource officers that's been done from the city to make our schools safe. There's 1,200 cameras that are monitored. There are, there's a task force, a joint committee between the school board and the city council to talk about issues such as these, to see how we can improve it. And I know this is something that continues to be looked into, so I'm going to wait any recommendations from our Chief of Police before I pull the trigger here tonight, pardon the pun, and say that, say that we need to do more because I think we're doing quite a bit only.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan.
I remember when the, the school board actually paid for crossing guards and they couldn't afford it. So they said, "No more crossing guards." So the city, cities stood up to the plate and says, "We will provide payment for the crossing guards." And now that's a big portion of the budget. But we could have done without them, you might have lost, I don't know, five, six children a year being run over. So the city said, "No, we're going to stand up, we're going to pay for it." I guarantee you, what the police department figures is necessary, I can guarantee I will on this council vote to get them the equipment and the training and the manpower necessary. We cannot allow school children in elementary to get run over. We cannot allow children in high school to get shot. We will do our best to prevent it and unfortunately, no matter what you do, there's always a slight chance, but if that happens, PD will be there in a heartbeat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to use their yellow card on that question that didn't get a chance?
Okay, question number three. "Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, along with the County Board of Supervisors, all have voted to ban hydrofluoric acid, a toxic chemical, at the Torrance refinery. While the South Coast Air Quality Management District continues its review, do you think hydrofluoric acid should be banned from Torrance? Why or why not?" And we will start with Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, thank you, I like being first. Yes, I mean, the last question was safety of our children at school. Talking about maybe a dozen kids at the most getting run over, we're talking about some getting shot. These numbers have escalated, now we're talking up to 10,000 people. You know, if I can't allow 10 people to be killed from negligence, I can't allow 10,000 or up to 10,000. And it may never happen. It hasn't happened yet, it may never happen. But yes, and I've written a letter to the AQMD saying, "I'm against it." The theory was, when I was a painting contractor, they took all the lead out of paint for safety reasons. Okay, it was very unprofitable for me, but it was a good law. I put safety over profit and so today. Now, they should do the same thing, but safety over profit. And I don't think anybody's saying it has to be done in six months or a year, but they got to work on it. Thank you much, I don't want to see that finger.
Mr. Chen.
Fortunately, I've met with both people from TRAA and I visited the Torrance Refinery Company, so I'm looking at both sides. As of yesterday, I spent a couple of hours at the refinery and had got some insight there. I believe the Southern California AQMD will have another meeting at the end of this month to make a decision. The way I see this going on is, no question, the MHF, MHF is a dangerous substance. And I actually believe there's actually a lot of other dangerous substances in the city, or even in our garage, in our household. Your portable butane gas, those people use for barbecue sometimes that could blow up in your face. We don't come out and say we ban it. I think the refinery is a large target for people to get concerned. What I would want to do is see what the AQMD do and what I'm thinking right now, I talked to the refinery yesterday, I would say, "Let's get the, let's get three of the top three from TRAA, three of the top three from the refinery, and three neutral people in the room and then let them talk it out."
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Mr. Gao.
Yes, thank you. I am, well let me, let me start this way, just for balance. I was on the Community Advisory Panel, CAP, in the transition from ExxonMobil to PBF. So that was the refinery-led thing. But I'm also the only person up here who's a founding member of the Torrance Refinery Action Alliance. So that happened because of the ESP that blew up three years ago. And that had really nothing to do with MHF other than that a piece of equipment went flying during the explosion and almost hit a tank containing MHF. So the danger exists, we want to do something about it. I believe in retrofit of the state, of the refinery to convert to a safer form, probably not even so fair. There's new methodology of evacuation coming up and that's what I would encourage. And think about the jobs that could be created in hiring people to do that retrofit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodrich.
After the refinery exploded three years ago, I've spent an immense amount of time reading different reports and technological data, meeting with people, listening to experts on this issue. And first, we found out that this chemical was, should have been banned 30 years ago, but it was for a technicality in a lawsuit that allowed them to keep using it. And then we found out that the worst-case analysis, the data they were using to determine what could happen, that data was flawed. And it was just one thing after another, before long you realize you've got to do something. And I'm proud to say, that along with Councilmember Kurt Waithe, we are the two people who introduced the resolution in front of the Torrance Council to ban MHF. And the only two people that voted for it. We may have lost that vote, but I certainly think that it put the Air Quality Management District on notice that this is an important issue to this community and we were able to use our voice to stand up for the residents for the safety of the city.
Thank you. Councilman Waithe.
Thank you, Jim. I have publicly endorsed a ban on AMHF from the Dais of the Torrance City Council. I have written a letter to Dr. William Burke of the AQMD stating the same. I came late to this decision. I had to listen to both sides. But when the AQMD funded a report, an independent report, not sponsored by the refinery, not sponsored by TRAA, but that report was called the Norton Report. And that report said that MHF is a dangerous chemical that can hurt the people of this community.
Thank you. Mr. Matucci.
Thank you. I'm actually very much in favor of finding a viable replacement to MHF, although I'm not quick to jump on a ban and I'll explain briefly. MHF is actually used in other industries in very small amounts and I would like to also make sure that we, before we start banning stuff, that we actually look at the long-term effects of a ban because it could actually open up the door to banning pretty much everything that we deem dangerous. There's no question, MHF is absolutely dangerous, being in the refining business is also a dangerous business to be in. So I would like to really just look at viable replacements, sulfuric acid like Jimmy said... So I would like to really just look at viable replacements, sulfuric acid, like Jimmy said, may not be the replacement. But to actually put a very short timeframe on the refinery, I don't think that's fair either for a business like theirs.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question. The Torrance Unified School District is exploring to sell or lease the Hamilton Adult School Site in North Torrance. Recently, the North Torrance Homeowners Association voted to support the efforts in protecting Hamilton Adult School. What is your position on the sale or lease of the Hamilton Adult School Site? If you don't support the sale or lease, how will you help keep this school in our community? If you support the sale or lease, who or what organization do you think should occupy this space? We're going to start with Mr. Chen, and this is a yellow card question.
My understanding is the Hamilton Adult Center is actually a, there's a 7-11 commission, and that decision's going to be determined by them, their recommendation in the school board, and it's not really a city council jurisdiction, if you will. I believe that we do need ball fields, if that's the question. And I think we need to look at potentially other alternatives that the city could provide if there is no ball field for the kids for their little league. In terms of facility for adult school, I think the school board has to determine if there is sufficient facility for the school board. So I'm going to leave that up to the school board to decide. The kind of stuff I would like to do as part of the city council is introduce some type of international Summer Olympic Games for the youth, and we'll create even more ball games for everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matucci?
Save the fields. Save the fields. We need to do anything in our power as a city council, as a city, to stop the sale. I understand that it's in the hands of the school board and the 7-11 committee, but I think we need to do whatever we can, not just as a city, but also as residents and business owners. I really do feel that the school board has a spending problem, and they need those, what is it, $25 million in assets that need to sell out to pay bills. I think it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous that we have to sell our children's future, because once those properties are sold, they're just going to be sold to a developer that's going to throw some buildings on it, and we have to take our kids halfway across the town to go to the next closest fields. I don't think it's fair. Save the fields.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wedeman?
Yes, thank you very much. Presently, this issue is not within the jurisdiction of the Torrance City Council. The process is playing itself out. And in one sense, I kind of hesitate to answer an absolute yes or no on this, because it will eventually maybe come to the Torrance City Council. But let me make the public aware of the kind of leverage the Torrance City Council has with respect to any planned development at Hamilton. You know, we're responsible for the land use and the zoning, and we can make it extremely difficult for anybody who would want to build something there that we don't believe in. I'm going to let the process play itself out. When it gets to the Torrance City Council, you can count on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to use your yellow card for this question?
Our next question. Do you believe the city has a homeless problem? If yes, what is your plan to address the homeless problem in our city? And we will start with Mr. Gal.
Well, maybe not like other cities in the area, but as with a lot of things, like MHF, coyotes, homelessness also doesn't necessarily recognize city borders. And so, just because Torrance may not have an overwhelming homeless problem like, say, Redondo or other cities in the South Bay, doesn't mean we don't have a problem. Now, I want to acknowledge the city council that created, under the leadership of our mayor, the Social Services Commission that I chair. One of the four populations that we serve is the homeless issue, and so we, as a commission, are looking at ways of doing that. We just completed a toiletry drive that's provided those toiletry items for three different service providers, and we had, okay.
Next, Mr. Matucci?
Yes, I'm also working with Jimmy on the Social Services Commission, so we get to see a lot of the reports, a lot of the organizations that help the homeless. And a trend that I see is that we're really just scraping the surface of a solution. And what I mean by that is that we're giving them toiletries, which is nice, we're giving them food and sometimes shelter, but what I truly believe we need to do is, first of all, enforce the ordinances and laws that we already have in the books. My understanding is that right now, we have a standout orders to where if a homeless individual is in the park after hours, they're no longer being kicked out. And I get this also from the residents around the parks. We need to change that. We need to immediately look at different ordinances that would actually, I don't want to use the word "force," but I'm going to say, "push" people into programs. There's a lot of great programs out there, we need to start using them. Thank you.
Mr. Chen?
I think the question was posed, is there a homeless problem? And the question's a little bit interesting to me, because I don't know, do we call it a problem? I went to the Torrance Main Library today and I saw a gentleman sleeping around a planter. He appeared homeless to me. He had a lot of his bags in a shopping cart nearby. I think what we need to do is, if there's a case like that, is if we believe there's someone who needs help, I think we need to find a way to approach a person to see what kind of help him or her needs, and work with the council, the LA County Department of Social Services. And then, I think the other area we ought to look at is go to the Coalition of Churches to see if there's any resources, the Coalition of Churches, I just made up that term, to see if they're willing to help. And then we want to get the police department to be involved with that, because in some cases, a lot of us may be concerned about helping because of safety. So we could partner, we may have some new ideas on how to help the situation.
Councilman Wedeman?
Yes, thank you. I'm proud to have sat on the diocese city council when we created our newest commission, the Social Services Commission, because I think it was very important. Matter of fact, the idea stemmed from our newest councilman, Milton Herring, who suggested it originally, to help veterans, to help the homeless, to help the mentally challenged, so on and so forth. As chair of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, we have tried our 17 jurisdictions. These are the cities that surround us. We recognize that it's a regional problem. The homeless don't necessarily tell the difference between the border between Torrance and Redondo Beach. So we've tried and attempted to deal with this regionally. And the path, we've got a contractor named Path that's funded by the supervisors Ridley, Thomas, and Janice Haun, and we're trying to deal with it regionally. There's more to be said on this, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Mr. Sutherland?
Well, the last I heard was like 80 homeless people in Torrance. Is that a lot? If you're one of them, it's a heck of a lot. This has really affected me in the last, say, three months. There's one or two every morning sleeping on the parkway in front of my house on El Prado. You know, that happened a lot 30 years ago when I first lived there, but now it's with the last couple of months. There are problems. I don't believe we can just roust them and say, "You've got to leave." These people are out of luck, probably it's either a mental problem, a drug problem, you know, something other that they could not help. We need to provide the assistance for that, and not just say, "Well, you took the drugs, you deserve it. You drank the booze, you deserve it. They're down on their luck, we have to help." Yes, the churches should help, but the city has to have some type of guidance, and I think they're doing pretty good. And 80 is not a lot, but it's a lot if you're one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodrich?
Yes, there is a homeless problem in the city of Torrance, and it's quantified. The previous homeless count was 75, and then the most recent one was 84, so it's increasing. I will say, it's not as bad as many other cities, but it is something to be addressed at every city. Measure H was passed on a county-wide basis, and I recently met with Nancy Wilcox, who heads the homeless, the Regional Homeless Coalition, which many churches are a part of that coalition already. And met with her, and also went down to tour the Regional Collector, the regional supportive homeless housing down in San Pedro Harbor Interfaith, and met with them as well to see what kind of services they're able to provide. And I was heartened to learn that Measure H, that money is available for us to use, and we can, they're very flexible in the way you use it, to adapt to different cities' needs and can be very innovative. And I intend to take advantage of that money, since it's there from the county, to address our problem.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question. Last year, the city opposed Senate Bill 54, which would prohibit local law enforcement agencies to investigate, interrogate, detain, detect, or arrest persons for immigration enforcement purposes. What is your position on this bill? Mr. Matucci?
Goody-goody. I, that's probably one of the first things I'm going to do, is propose that we opt out. Reason being, I think SB 54, besides being possibly unconstitutional, we're going to have to prove that, it's something that actually puts criminal illegal aliens first, on top of the well-being of the citizens. I just don't understand how we got to this point. I feel that we need to take immediate steps, and if we don't like the laws, we can advocate those, change those laws, but we can't just ignore the fact that we have federal immigration laws. And it puts really our ICE agents at risk, and it also puts our residents at risk. So yes, that's the first thing I'm going to do, is to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gal?
Well, this doesn't put criminals above citizens. This puts people's safety above all else. And what I mean by that is this. Part of what SB 54 does is separate our local law enforcement in our state from federal ICE agents who are doing a completely different function than what our safety people are doing here in the city and throughout the state. So what we want to do is make sure that we don't have a situation where, if a woman, just because of documentation status, is suffering domestic abuse, or is raped, or some other crime, that for fear of being reported to ICE, she is afraid to go and report a rape, afraid to go and report domestic abuse, or any other crime. And we do not want people living in our city, in our state, to have that fear just for fear of the documentation status. So we want to make sure that we support SB 54 and abide by our state.
Thank you. Councilman Wedeman?
Yes, thank you very much. Facts. Facts. The city of Torrance wrote a letter to our state legislatures in January of this year stating our opposition to SB 54. I understand that there are some small cities in Orange County now that are trying to opt out. It's kind of a little bit like the cannabis stuff, the federal government says this, and the state government says this. The same is kind of true of this particular one. We've got Sacramento saying this, and we've got the feds saying that. I think this is one that the city of Torrance, we've already stated our opposition to it, we've gone on record, but why don't we just let the others play it out on this one? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
I am not for SB 54. And me being a legal, first-generation immigrant, it hits very close to home. And I think sometimes the usage of the sanctuary city or the verbiage plays on our emotions unfairly. I believe if I commit a crime, or anyone here who's a citizen committed a crime, then we have to go through due process of the law. We came to this country because this is a country of law and order. So it should not be because of what, if you're documented or not, just, that's plain and simple, the way I see it. Now, I believe that there's also a law of priority of the law. I do believe that the local city and the state should abide by the federal law and go by the Constitution of the United States. So that's, it's not so much an immigration to me, but more following the law.
Thank you. Councilman Goodrich?
Well, Councilmember Wedeman is correct. The city is on record opposing SB 54 already. Personally, I do have some concerns with it. But what we have seen from the data is, when immigration is an issue, and we've seen this just a couple of months ago, because some of our residents were going into some of the inner-city or East LA areas and stirring up trouble intentionally, got all those people from those East LA cities coming to our council chambers. We had all the troublemakers from our own city in our chambers. So the furthest element on the left and the furthest element on the right were coming together, and it created a virtual zoo in our council chambers. And so, for that reason, I'm not in favor of bringing this issue back at this time, because we have more important work to do here in the city, we have more important things to focus on, including this election, and also, also the thing that just got dropped on us, the bombshell and just potential district elections. We've got a lot of work to do in the next six to eight weeks here to be sidetracked by that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sutherland?
I'm not even a first-generation American. I paid $25 to become an American when I was 18 years old. I was born in Scotland. My parents came over here quite legally, did everything it was supposed to do. They got their green cards, they did their job, they did what was expected of them by America. And I see no problem why other people can't do the same. Now, should we arrest somebody that's been here illegally for five years and never done anything wrong? No. You can't send them back. But once they commit a crime, yes, you can. I think our police department does a very good job, and I think they're going to be rather selective. They're going to try and arrest the criminals. If you're here illegally and you've been here for a while, living with a family, I don't think they're going to harass you, and I don't think they should. But on the other hand, I disagree with being a sanctuary city. You know, they put the letter in, and I believe that's enough. Maybe at some point, they might have to join the lawsuits of the other cities, but no, I do not agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number seven. According to the March 3 Daily Breeze article, rents have climbed 4.3% in the past year, and the average price for a South Bay home is $1 million. Employers are facing difficulty hiring mechanics, industrial engineers, and other middle-wage workers. Are we losing our industrial footprint, one of our key components of our balanced vision for the city? If yes, how do we make Torrance more affordable to maintain this balance? For example, should we explore high-density housing? Councilman Wedeman?
Thank you very much for this question. About three weeks ago, I went to Robinson Helicopter, talked to Kurt Robinson. We share the aerospace industry. I worked for 26 years at High Shear on Sky Park. Right across the tarmac was Robinson Helicopter. I asked him what was his biggest challenge in manufacturing in Torrance today, and he said, "Finding affordable housing for my workers." He's got workers that live in Seal Beach, he's got workers that live outside the area because they can't afford to live here. One wonders whether or not Toyota's real reason wasn't the promises from Texas, but the fact that they couldn't find affordable housing for their employees. I think that there is a way to have affordable housing in Torrance. I don't necessarily know that high-density housing is the answer. Thank you. Councilman Goodrich?
So first off, in terms of high-density housing, I want to be clear, because there's some misinformation out there about this, is this council in the last four years has not approved any high-density housing whatsoever. In fact, we've approved very little housing. We approved, from memory, 120-unit development in West Torrance, and other than that, it's just a spattering of 1 and 2, maybe a 4 unit here and there, and that's it. That is a very small percentage of our housing stock overall that we have increased. Extremely slow growth. Second of all, we're not going to lose our technological advantage here, not under my watch, should I be re-elected. I mentioned my plan to go after tech business. I mentioned my plan to go after tech businesses in the city and fill the vacant Toyota campus. One of the first things I'll do upon getting re-elected is get all the stakeholders together because that's really what's necessary. It's a multifaceted effort. Education is key. Wanna get El Camino College and SoCal Rock together, figure out how we can tweak our curriculum to make sure that we're providing the staff that we need for those jobs. Thank you. Mr. Matuschich?
Thank you. With all due respect, guys, I mean, if we have to build housing to meet every job in town, I think we're gonna have a problem here. I mean, if Mr. Robinson wants to make sure that their employees can afford Torrance, then maybe he should pay them a little bit more. You know, and also, let's look at the pipeline. We have Butcher Hill, five stories, 248 units to be plopped on a site. That's, it's relatively large, but the buildable area is tiny. Not only that, Guevara Monte, for instance, is just one lane in each direction. We need to be very careful with our infrastructure. Okay, so I love the views of Malaga Cove, you know, when you, when you go up there and you see that beautiful coastline view, city night, lights. I don't expect Palos Verdes Estates to build housing that meets my income level. Doesn't work that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sutherland?
I've been known to go to Hofshut for breakfast Monday through Friday quite often. And the waitress there today says, my rent's going up $200 a month. And I said, well, that's a heck of a lot. She said, well, it went up $200 a month last year also. That's reality. So there is a housing shortage. Now, part of the problem is the government. Look at all the restrictions you're putting on it. Every time you build a house, they're adding some new electrical requirement. My son-in-law built a remodel and instead of using like a $20 kitchen light, they had to get four or five lights, that's $400 to $500 per light to match the code. You know, well, that's not much, but you multiply that times every phase of a job, the government's doing more harm than good. And do we want big buildings? I got in in 2006 because they're gonna build 1,400 condos at the mall. So no, we do not want that type of building. Will we get it someday? If the state has your way, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gao?
Yes, thank you. Well, this is where our city's motto kind of comes in, and that is a balanced city. We can't very well say that we want to have all these jobs for our city and not have places for workers to be. So that's, that's that balance that I think somebody was already mentioning about getting people together to come up with a solution that will work. God only knows that there's places in our city that would do very well with having some development, maybe even some rezoning so that it would accommodate more than what exists there now. I know, I live here in North, so I know that along Artesia, there's a couple of prime places that could probably do for something a little bit different there that would accommodate more people. There's a lot of different possibilities and I'd be open to exploring a lot of them.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
I think that we need, the whole city and the residents should probably take a step back and review our general plan, our strategic plan, in light of where we're going in the 21st century. I think even I look across the room, you know, I don't wanna offend anyone, it's not just young professionals can't afford housing. We also need affordable housing for seniors as well, too, right? So we need to look at the big picture. And we're talking about high density. I'm not for high density, but we have to also redefine lines, you know, as referring to Butcher Hill. The developers of Butcher Hill is really asking for a zone change from low density to low medium. So the 248 units, that's the request they're asking, low-medium density. So that's not even, you know, the definition of high density is in the planning commission or the planning department. But I think what we need to do is search for higher-paying jobs. That's the angle we need to work at, is higher-paying jobs.
Thank you very much. This is the last yellow card question. Question number eight. Amazon and online consuming is on the rise, which may negatively impact some of our local businesses, including our Delama Mall. What is your economic plan to sustain and attract businesses to Torrance? Mr. Gao?
Well, gotta have a place to put the workers, right? So the thing is, is we have the Toyota site that is potential for attracting new places. I understand that the Amazon bid, we were interested in looking at that as well. So we wanna make sure that we do everything we can to attract technology-based. I remember when the South Bay was the hub of the aerospace industry, my father worked. There's somewhere in the family album, there's a picture of me standing in front of the Apollo 8 capsule after it had come back. We wanna make sure that we're in the forefront of leading that, as well as other technology-based industries and so I wanna make sure that when I'm on council that we do everything we can to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Sutherland?
Yes, Amazon's killing a lot of businesses. There's no question about that. For the last three forms, I've heard of what they wanna do with the old Toyota property. The company that bought that's got a lot of plans and they're actually gonna have almost as many employees as Toyota did. So that piece of property is well taken care of. What can we do? Well, we have a, people in our city government that does nothing but look for people to come to Torrance. The mayor is, current mayor has got lots of people to come to Torrance for companies. The past mayor in council has lots of people come to Torrance. We got a pet food manufacturing company come to Torrance. They actually had paid for a lease on another property, but the city of Torrance treated them so well, so business-friendly, they came to Torrance. Torrance is not really hurting for getting businesses. Torrance has businesses. We just need space, as everybody else says, to put the employees. You know, it's a new world, life is changing, we have to change with it.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
This, the answer to this question is very similar to my previous question. What I would look at is, let's go back and look at the general plan, where the city wants to go in the future. I think the technology of 21st century is, let's look for ways to get higher-paying jobs in the city, whether it be having innovation fairs, to invite the young high school, college students here in the city and challenge each other with it. Who is gonna be, create the next Google here? Who's gonna create the next Facebook here? You know, it's not Amazon taking us out to lunches. How do we bring Amazon into Torrance? That's the kind of innovation we need. We need new ideas that would dream up energy in this city. We need our next generation to be able to have high-paying jobs so that they potentially can have an opportunity to live within 10 square, you know, 10 miles of radius of here so that they don't have to go to, you know, live in Temecula or somewhere. That's the thing I think we need to do.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to use our yellow card? Mr. Matuschich?
Waiting for the finger again. Oh, oh, alright. Incentivize, we need to incentivize. Let the free market dictate what, you know, what starts up, what closes down. You know, sometimes we have a little bit too much government and free enterprise. Another thing, how are we incentivizing, if we're actually gonna be voting soon, on tripling the conditional use permit fees? They're already about over $3,000 and they're gonna go up to, I think, over $10,000. How is that incentivizing? How can we possibly call ourselves business-friendly and this is to fill in a shortfall of about $3 million in our budget? So let's be fair, okay? We need to really define what business-friendly is first because, you know, sorry, flying out to different countries to attract business, how about fixing the ones that are here? There's a lot of failing businesses here. I see them face-to-face almost every day. So let's fix that first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gao?
Well, first off, we don't have a budget deficit. We're mandated to maintain a balanced budget and that we do have. There are projections and those fluctuate from quarter to quarter. We just had our first government finance committee meeting and we saw that projections are maybe a little bit off, but we tweak as necessary and we do not have a bunch of deficit. Second of all, very proud to live in Torrance because we are business-friendly. We are named one of the most business-friendly cities in LA County. Proud to have that designation. And it shows because one of the largest problems we have in attracting businesses here is a lack of space to put them. If you look at the number of businesses license, business licenses that we have on file, we're setting records in issuing these things. Businesses are thriving in Torrance right now. Sure, there are some spots where they may be having trouble, but we have an economic team, development team to help them. I've been endorsed by the Business Federation of LA County. And also, one of the things I did is I changed our agendas. Upon taking office, I noticed that the cities where the companies were located, where we might be awarding bids, were not listed. And now, you notice that they are so that if we can have an opportunity to award a bid to a Torrance company, we will.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have--
I can answer some of these questions, you know? There's millions of square feet that are--
I have the, I have the, I have the honor of asking the last question, question number nine. I hope it's a fun question, designed to be a fun question. What are the top three revenue-generating businesses in North Torrance? And we'll start with Mr. Chen.
North Torrance? Wow. It's probably, I'm gonna say it's gonna be like probably the hotel business. I think there's a lot of hotels and restaurants and-- I don't know if the refinery considers it North Torrance, but that's probably the highest utility payer, so that's where I would go. I would say five hotel, restaurants, and the refinery, the top three. I'm not in that order, I'm just thinking on top of my head.
Councilman Wedeman?
North Torrance is considered north of 190th, so I don't think the refinery qualifies. However, I would like to answer it the same way I answered four years ago in this same forum. My favorite restaurant is-- At the time, it was The Loft, although my wife and my sister-in-law and I really enjoy El Ultra Amigo in the site of the old Romero's there on Crenshaw. So that's our favorite restaurant for the time being. Burger City Grill is, is close second and Steve's always comes in. One would suggest the restaurants were the highest contributor to the sales tax in North Torrance. I'm not sure of that, but I do like telling my favorite restaurants because we like to frequent them. It's a lot better than going to some franchise place. Thank you.
Mr. Matuschich?
Can you please repeat the question? Honestly, I was thinking about the last--
What are the top three revenue-generating businesses in North Torrance County?
For me?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, I would say small businesses as a whole. I mean, if, you know, I mean, does it really matter really who the top is? I mean, they could just pick up and leave anyway. So yeah, the small business is really who we need to cater to. So yeah, small businesses as a whole, especially the ones that are home-based, those are the best ones that we can cultivate to grow. I think they're all equally important. And quite honestly, even that many of the businesses in North Torrance are part of my organization, the USBA, they're all special to me. All of them. Thank you.
Councilman Goodrich?
Yes, it's actually a pretty difficult question because we don't, we don't really look at it in terms of what individual businesses are the top producer. We look at it more where the sales, the taxes come from. And the top three producers, revenue generators in the city, you know, the sales tax, the property tax, and the utility users' tax. So seeing as property tax is one of them, you could say that the homeowners are one of the largest revenue generators in North Torrance. There's no more flossies, so I can't say any favorite restaurants. But--
That was good.
I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
I told you it was gonna be a little fun question. Mr. Gao?
Yes, well, I would think that all of our small businesses that include small restaurants, where I live right around the corner on Venice is the small Japanese markets and whatnot, I think a cumulative thing would have them be a big number of our, of our businesses that might make a top three. But I agree, it is kinda hard to identify any one. And I unfortunately am gonna have to admit, sorry, North Torrance, but my favorite restaurant is actually Angara down on Torrance Boulevard. I love that Indian food there and that's where we go for anniversaries and New Years and whatnot, so. Sorry, getting Angara, not in North Torrance.
Mr. Sutherland?
I'm gonna answer this question just because I know the city of Torrance. I guess your first tax revenue would be the rodeo. That's a big place, lot of taxes. The second one would be the grocery store on Crenshaw in Artesia. That's another big store. And if you're gonna go to restaurants, I think you have to go to Country Cafe. And I'm not gonna suggest what you should eat, but what I eat in the morning for breakfast is the Louisiana sausage and eggs. And coffee. And hash browns. And toast. And jelly. So see, I am helping this economy. My stomach is not, but I am. Thank you very much. Oh, I got 19 seconds. I have signs over there, envelopes over there. If the signs are too big to carry, which they are because I have a long name, fill out a form and I'll deliver a sign tomorrow. Somewhere in North Torrance.
Thank you very much. That concludes all our questions and now we're moving on to closing statements. And we're gonna start with Mr. Sutherland so we can continue. We actually have two minutes.
Okay. I'm willing to work cooperatively with the school district in whatever way I can to help them through their difficult mission. We have discussed that tonight. But my first responsibility will always be the city budget. My wife Diana is a lifelong resident and I moved to Torrance by choice in 1978 where we raised our four children. I've owned my own Torrance business for 35 years. I've been a member of the Torrance Rodeo for 30 years and the Salvation Army Advisory Board for nine years. I've also been involved in Torrance Little League and AYSO as a regional commissioner and a divisional commissioner. Torrance truly is my and my wife's hometown. It is my mission to make Torrance an even better place where families are safe, businesses prosper, and residents are proud. With your help, we can and will improve our city. Please vote for me, Bill Sutherland, to once again serve you on the Torrance City Council on June 5. I have the experience to lead and the courage to do what's right. And I would like to thank everybody for being here. I'm willing to bet everybody had something better they could've done, but you've chosen your city to spend your time to make sure you vote with an informed decision. So thank you, I appreciate it and I'm sure all these council people appreciate it and good luck to all of us.
Thank you very much.
What was you talking about?
Mr. Gao, we have two minutes.
Oh, time's up. Thank you very much and thank you to everyone who came here to hear us out. We've talked about a lot of issues, a couple of that I didn't answer, but in short, I wanna make sure that we're keeping our students safe. So that issue came up and Hamilton, I wanna make sure that we make wise decisions there. So I support doing something that will make sure that we have ballfields, as I mentioned, Little League is very important. But there's one thing I do know and that is, I don't want us to go back. I want us to keep moving Torrance forward. You know, I'm running because I have two granddaughters and I wanna make sure that we are working to look at the kind of world that we're leaving for them. And that's why, one of the things that we did talk about, MHF, I wanna make sure that we're doing stuff that keeps our students safe, in our schools and our community safe. But rather than listing a whole bunch of other issues, what I'll say is this, I'll make you a promise, I'll listen to you. It's very important, I believe that government should be accessible to its citizens and transparent and responsible and reflecting what matters most to the community. So, and one of the things I've discovered when I talk to voters is what they really want, rather than you telling them all about something, is they wanna feel like they've been heard on whatever issue is important to them. And so I promise that I'll be the person that'll do that. I'll hear you out on whatever issue is important to you. I'll listen to you. I wanna be your go-to guy to represent you and be your voice. Because I have a vision for Torrance that it continues to be a great place to live and work and a wonderful place for families to raise and educate our future citizens. So join with me to move-- So, join with me to move Torrance forward. Was that my two minutes? Wow, wow, okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matucci, you have one minute.
Waiting for that finger. Yeah, all right. Uh, my name is, yeah, one minute, but my name is Aurelio Matucci. Aurelio has all the vowels. I don't know if you guys noticed that, but, uh, most of Torrance is clean and beautiful, uh, but we do have a lot of neglected pockets. Uh, we've got broken streets, sidewalks, uh, trash, weeds, homeless, increases in crime, uh, unfair street sweeping fines that we haven't talked about tonight, frivolous city spending, quite a bit of that going on, illegal dumping, huge problem. Uh, coyotes, of course, concerns with the refinery, uh, and the list goes on. But, uh, I really do think that we need to tackle these issues immediately before they become the new normal. Uh, because, let's face it, you know, we get used to certain things and we think it's the new normal. Uh, I live in the seaside area. It's beautiful, uh, but unfortunately, Torrance doesn't stop at Subover Boulevard. Uh, one promise I, I will make is that not one square inch of Torrance will be neglected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, you have two minutes.
Thank you, North Torrance HOA residents here for the candidate's forum. Being a first-generation immigrant and naturalized citizen, I have the opportunity to pursue the American dream, and I want to give back to the country and the community that I call home. I am the only candidate that will bring you 33 years of 21st century relevant industry experience to the city council for a vibrant tomorrow. Our city has tremendous need for revenue to address all of our obligations. I envision our city to be like Silicon Valley of the South Bay, where we become the business and technology innovation center of excellence for the brightest in the world who flock to innovate new ideas. Domestic and international entrepreneurs will seek to invest, and we become the envy of other communities. In addition, I want to introduce annual International Youth Summer Olympic Games here in the heart of Torrance, with the goal of sending 28 homegrown youth Olympians to qualify for the 2028 Olympics when LA is the host. Imagine the type of energy, uh, that we'll bring to the city, the revenue, international and domestic. Everybody will flock to Torrance and buy our food, go to our hotels. Create high-paying jobs that provides a foundation to drive up revenue. Today, LA Biz Fed called me and endorsed me. Together, we can set the path for a vibrant tomorrow. I respectfully ask for your vote June 5 as your city councilman. For more information, go to www.voteforgeorgechen.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Weidemann, we have two minutes.
My roots in North Torrance go deep. Sue and I bought our home in North Torrance 33 years ago. Our children attended CAR, McGruder, and North Eye. My wife was an active member of all the PTAs, and I was a North Torrance Little League coach. We have been members of this organization since it was known as the Northwest Torrance Homeowners Association. I could probably point to many accomplishments that have benefited this community during my time on the city council. The McMaster Park renovation, the bocce courts at Columbia Park, 12,583 feet of water main replacement, protective permissive left turn signal at 182nd and Prairie, street resurfacing at 177th, 190th and Crenshaw Boulevard, and the development of the North Torrance water wells. Particularly important because as we develop these sources, we establish more independence for the Metropolitan Water District. I want to thank the North Torrance Homeowners Association for such a well-run forum, and I especially want to thank this audience, because democracy is messy. And by coming tonight and listening to our answers, you're sizing us up, and you're deciding who will best represent you over the next four years. And my public record shows that I am open-minded to citizen concerns, transparent in my actions, and I put the best interest of the future of Torrance at the forefront of my decisions. My candidacy represents our shared values, the Torrance citizens should expect from their elected officials: openness, sound judgment, and fair play. 2018 will decide the future direction of our city. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goodrich, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you. My record speaks for itself when it comes to public safety, when it comes to infrastructure, and you have my word, I will continue to push for more road funding until we're proud of our roads again. And also, when it comes to transparency. One of the things I did, as the first council member in Torrance history to do so, is to maintain a constituent services website at timgoodrich.com, and send out email newsletters to residents who sign up for them, to keep them informed of what's going on in our city. Anybody can visit and see the entire archive of things that I've sent out over the last four years, and I'll continue to do that. Also got a record of maintaining the individual character of each individual neighborhood throughout the city of Torrance. And we've done all this while being very fiscally prudent throughout our city and not overspending. Going to continue to do that, going to continue to push for technology jobs, and, uh, just want to say, democracy dies in darkness. Thank you for being the sunlight here tonight.
Thank you very much. So, thank you very much, candidates, and good luck. And now we will turn over, give us about 10 minutes or less, and we'll go in with the mayor can, uh, forum.